We also have some special guests this evening. We have Troop, Boy Scout Troop number 506 from St. Francis. And we have the leader of Bob Bubnick is leading it. I don't know if anybody else is involved in it, but I don't have all the names. So, sorry about that. But we're going to ask all the Boy Scouts to approach the microphone over here and stand behind it. And maybe we can move it a little bit to lead us in a pledge of allegiance this evening. So, if you can move up there and lead us in the pledge, that'll be great.
Okay. Oh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Teresa Knox as acting clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, for the acting clerk, would you please call the roll?
Coy.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Cavie.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Teresa Knox as acting clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, for the acting clerk, would you please call the roll?
Coy.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Cavie.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of October 9th of 2018, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes. Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will again meet two weeks from now. Several items were discussed and are on the agenda. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but we have a special legislation meeting scheduled for 7:00 on November 1st. And the meeting will be held here, in this room. And it will be the special legislation meeting on the equality legislation.
Thank you. Teresa Sabos Committee, Mr. Heffinger.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. President, and no meeting is scheduled.
Thank you. Water Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Cavie.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing to report and no meetings are scheduled.
Thank you. Health Safety Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Nothing to report, Mr. President, and no meeting is scheduled at this time.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled, Mr. President.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have three items for the Finance Committee. We have 18-182 budget amendments, 18-183 authorized online sale of two fire pumpers, and 18-184 accept a Bureau of Workers' Compensation grant. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Sunday, October 14th, there was a Northern Ohio Region Porsche Club of America Rally on our public square. And I shared with the council, but they had very good things to say about the city. This is the first they've hosted one here. And they're already planning next year's event for our square. They were very complimentary of the park staff, the service staff, and the police staff. It was actually where they met on the square first, and then they released the cars in certain numbers at a time, and then had a route that they ran, and then ended up back here. On October 31st, Wednesday, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the city will have our annual trick-or-treat, asks the public to be cautious of those with costumes and crossing the streets. On November 7th, at 7:00 PM, the annual Veterans Day concert will take place at St. Francis Church, which is 606 East Washington Street. The featured speaker this year will be Representative Steve Hambly from the Ohio Legislature. Parking is available free at the church. And there's also overflow parking permitted at 600 East Smith or 620 East Smith. And they ask if anybody would like to bring a non-perishable good for the St. Vincent de Paul Society. The church will put that to good use. Just a little forecast notice, on Friday, November 16th through Sunday, November 18th, will be the downtown, the tree lighting on Friday evening, the downtown lighting, as well as the parade on Saturday night. And right after the tree lighting, also on the square at the gazebo, Ohio Magazine will be on hand to recognize the city of Medina as one of Ohio's best hometowns. So, we've added that to the candlelight walk celebration. Bicentennial community events coming up, October 27th at 10:30 AM. The bicentennial committee and the Community Design Committee will provide a program on the restoration of the public square. On November 10th, 2018, at 1:00 PM, James Banks, Ph.D., will present a program on World War I, George Cryle, and the founding of the Cleveland Clinic. And on Sunday, November 11th, at 9:00 AM, there'll be a decoration of the square for the candlelight walk, if anybody's interested in volunteering some time for that. And also, on November 11th, at 10:45, there'll be a brief ceremony at the square recognizing the end of World War I. And for additional bicentennial events, you can go to their website, which is www.madina200.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's an ordinance on tonight to accept amounts and rates that has to do with the budget procedure that the state lays out for us. As you know, we're finishing up our five-year plan, which is for our financial budget for 2019 through 2023. I'll address the amounts and rates when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo the mayor's comments regarding Halloween. Trick-or-treat will be October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Just implore the public to be careful and drive safely during that time. There will be increased police presence in the neighborhoods here in the city of Medina, as well as Lafayette Township's neighborhood developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report.
Thank you. And Mr. Pakoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things to say. So, the East Smith Road project is going well. The contractor is grading, and we expect paving to begin next week. So, we appreciate folks' presence, patience, rather, with the presence of that site. Route 42 widening project, it's entering its final stages of landscaping. We're hopeful that the streetlights will be energized possibly by the end of this week. And there will be intermittent lane closures the remainder of this week. This project should be complete by early November. All work, of course, is weather-dependent. Additionally, we've been receiving calls anxious about the leaf program. So, it's not officially started, however, we do have a truck out that's been cruising through the city. There aren't quite enough piles to have the whole staff out. We will increase staffing and trucks as necessary going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and petitions. We have one liquor permit, not to object to the issuance of a D5 and D6 permit to Ruby Tuesday, Inc., 1001 North Court Street, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the acting clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
And Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. I think we have two individuals, Tom Jenkins and Krista Wazowski from the Manana County Health Department, wish to speak. So, if you approach the microphone, that'd be great.
Thank you. Krista Wazowski, business address is 4800 Ledgewood Drive. This is Mr. Tom Jenkins. He's with me this evening as well. Thank you. I will be brief in my comments to you. The purpose of my visit this evening is to talk a little bit about the levy that's on for the Health Department on the November 6th ballot. The levy is a 0.27 mil renewal levy. It has been on the books since 1958. It was placed onto the books as operational levy for the Health Department just after that point in time is when the cities and the townships joined together to have a singular health department in the county. So, I am, in fact, your Health Commissioner. I work very often with your city officials here in Medina. And we're very proud to represent you. Mr. Jenkins is your direct appointment to the Board of Health. You have, in addition to that, three seats that you have 1/26 of a vote for. So, you have Mr. Jenkins and myself always available to you for any concerns that you have regarding health and in the city. So, one of the things that I wanted to reiterate for you this evening is that we are not a county agency. I believe many members of the public may think otherwise, given our name, our business, our operating name. We do not receive a budget or operating funds from the county. We also do not receive operating funds from the state of Ohio. We need to be self-sustaining, and we have been. We do not take inside millage also from any of the townships. Our budget, 44% comes from levy funds. 44% of our budget is fees and contracts. And then 11% of our budget comes from grants. One significant change in the last three years in the state of Ohio has been that the Health Department has to reserve about $900,000 for grants. We need to front that money and then receive that money back to us as reimbursement. So, it's money that we can't use for operations of our daily business. So, that's something that we've been able to manage. We've done that very well over the past several years. We've actually decreased the amount of our budget, the percentage of the budget that is levy-funded. We have been very aggressive in finding grants and other ways to operate. You may be familiar with our health clinic. We have many members of the city of Medina. Many of your residents come to the Health Department for services, full medical services, full dental services. So, with that, I do have some information I can leave for you or for any of the other members of the public that are here this evening. And I will remain for any questions that you may have at the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? There's a lot of people out there. Everybody wants to take a chance? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 151-18, in ordinance to accept the expedited type-two petition application for annexation of certain territory containing 31.9424 acres of land known as being part of Lafayette Township to the city of Medina, county, city of Medina, Manana County, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance formally accepts the annexation that the city of Medina has been working on with Lafayette Township. This is a dual jurisdiction annexation. It is a benefit to both the city and Lafayette Township, and it enables the business that's coming to town to develop the property along Smith Road where this annexation is occurring. It's approximately 31 acres in land. It has been approved by the Medina County Commissioners, and at this point, we formally accept it upon passage of this ordinance. Our clerk, Kathy Patton, can sign the Mylar, and the annexation can formally be recorded, and we'll go forward from there.
Thank you, and we appreciate all your effort and time. I know this is a great collaborative effort between Lafayette Township and the city of Medina to bring another business to our communities. And I think it's, they're excited to be here, and I think they've started construction somewhat on their project. They just needed additional land to complete it. Is there any other comments regarding the ordinance 151? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance 151?
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 151-18 passes 7-0.
Resolution 152-18, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the motion to accept amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission that I spoke of earlier. It's the first step of the state's budget process that they have that we have to follow. We're already done with most of the other steps, but this is the state's steps, and we will accept these. And we have asked for the emergency clause because we have to return this to the Budget Commission by the end of the month.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the resolution and/or the emergency clause? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
And Rose.
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 7-0.
Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Resolution 152-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 153-18, in ordinance authorizing the payment of your construction for private home rehabilitation at 44 Circle Drive, Medina, Ohio, as part of the fiscal year 2016 CHIP Grant Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a private rehabilitation under our current CHIP grant at 44 Circle Square here in the city of Medina for $28,725. This would be to help improve this property under that grant. The emergency clause is requested because the work needs to be completed by the end of this month to be able to close it out and have it paid for with the current grant, which will be ending this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 7-0.
Will the acting clerk please call the roll and adopt from the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 153-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 154-18, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, for drug screening and associated professional services for the employees of the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, sir. So, each year, the city of Medina rebids our drug screening. These are for new employees, as well as employees in an accident. And then certain numbers of our employees, CDL drivers and safety forces, are randomly selected, a certain percentage throughout the year. So, we just feel it's right to rebid this each year. There's a number of organizations in the community, businesses in the community that provide this service, and to give each of them a chance and use the tax dollars as efficiently as we can. The reason for the emergency clause is we need to advertise it, receive the proposals, and have it awarded by the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just for clarification for the Boy Scouts, when we're talking about the emergency clause, the reason we put one on there is because if we didn't have an emergency clause, every ordinance or resolution would take 30 days to become effective. So, nothing could happen for 30 days. So, when we say an emergency clause, it becomes effective immediately. We don't have to wait 30 days. So, just so when you keep hearing us saying, "Why are you doing an emergency clause?", that's the purpose. So, will the acting clerk please call the roll on emergency clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Ordinance 154-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 155-18, in ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2018 Case Superend Loader backhoe for the Water Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pakoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this purchase is through the state bid process. The original pricing was $92,000. However, the vendor is accepting a trade-in from our 2003 15-year-old backhoe for $22,000. We will not see delivery for four months after tonight's approval, which means the vendor understands that the machine will be traded in at the end of February, and we're able to use it till that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 155-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 156-18, in ordinance amending the Special Planning District Number One, SPD One, Development Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is an ordinance related to review by the Planning Commission at their July 12th, 2018, meeting to discuss the amendments to the Special Planning District Number One Design Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan. This was basically the Development Guidelines and the Design Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan act as the zoning code for an area that's encompassed by the Special Planning District. The applicant requested amending certain sections of that design guidelines to make it more flexible for development of a project that they are looking to do for residential townhomes. This would be in the northwest corner of the 40 acres that is encompassed by SPD Number One, which is 40 acres at the northwest corner of Route 3 and High Point Drive at the south end of the city. These changes would adjust the area of one of the sub-districts within the plan, and then also adjust some of the development guidelines regarding accessory uses, yard requirements, setbacks, densities, and lot standards. So, at the July 12th meeting of the Planning Commission, they recommended approval to the city council. Then it moved into the city council's legislative process, which Finance Committee reviewed it on August 27th. There was a 30-day minimum, 30-day public hearing period. The public hearing was on October 9th, and now it's for ordinance review here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions regarding ordinance 156? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the adoption of ordinance 156?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavie.
Yes.
Ordinance 156-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 157-18, in ordinance amending Section 3102B6 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the intensive supervision probation employees for the municipal court.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a position over in the court. The position is funded by a grant that comes through the state. The state's fiscal year begins July 1st, so this will take effect effective July 1st. It's retroactive to July 1st of this year. The emergency clause is requested because every year this comes through from the state, but it doesn't come through until after it's done, and we have to have it effective as soon as possible so we can get this paid.
Any further discussion or comments on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the acting clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coy.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.[1412.28]
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is an ordinance related to review by the Planning Commission at their July 12, 2018, meeting to discuss the amendments to the Special Planning District Number One, Design Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan. This was basically the Development Guidelines and the Design Guidelines and Conceptual Development Plan act as the zoning code for area that's encompassed by the Special Planning District. The applicant requested amending certain sections of that design guidelines to make it more flexible for development of a project that they are looking to do for residential townhomes. This would be in the northwest corner of the 40 acres that is encompassed by SPD Number One, which is 40 acres at the northwest corner of Route Three and High Point Drive at the south end of the city. These changes would adjust the area of one of the sub-districts within the plan and then also adjust some of the development guidelines regarding accessory uses, yard requirements, setbags densities and lot standards. So at the July 12 meeting of the Planning Commission, they recommended approval to the City Council. Then it moved into the City Council's legislative process, which Finance Committee reviewed it on August 27. There was a 30-day minimum, 30-day public hearing period. The public hearing was on October 9 and now it's for ordinance review here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding ordinance 156? Will the acting clerk please call the role in adoption of ordinance 156?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 157-18 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 158-18, ordinance amending Sections 3102B6 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Community Development Department and accepting the new job description for Economic Development and Marketing Manager.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is an ordinance to create a new position within the Community Development Department. Currently, we have an Economic Development and Marketing Associate that's a permanent part-time basis, 29 hours a week, pay grade 9A. This ordinance would convert this position to a permanent full-time position effective January 1, 2019, with a pay grade 110, starting salary just over $45,000 a year. This would, this fund would be, this position would be funded through carryforward money in the Economic Development Budget as well as with the Economic Development JED Fund as a backup funding source. And as a pay grade 110 position, this would be under the appointment of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the acting clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 7-0.
Orderance 158-18, ordinance amending Sections 310211 and 3105 and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Community Development Department and accepting the new job description for Economic Development and Marketing Manager.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is an ordinance to create a new position within the Community Development Department. Currently, we have an Economic Development and Marketing Associate that's a permanent part-time basis, 29 hours a week, pay grade 9A. This ordinance would convert this position to a permanent full-time position effective January 1, 2019, with a pay grade 110, starting salary just over $45,000 a year. This would, this fund would be, this position would be funded through carryforward money in the Economic Development Budget as well as with the Economic Development JED Fund as a backup funding source. And as a pay grade 110 position, this would be under the appointment of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the acting clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Emergency clause passes 7-0.
Orderance 158-18, ordinance amending Sections 310211 and 3105 and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Community Development Department and accepting the new job description for Economic Development and Marketing Manager.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is an ordinance to create a new position within the Community Development Department. Currently, we have an Economic Development and Marketing Associate that's a permanent part-time basis, 29 hours a week, pay grade 9A. This ordinance would convert this position to a permanent full-time position effective January 1, 2019, with a pay grade 110, starting salary just over $45,000 a year. This would, this fund would be, this position would be funded through carryforward money in the Economic Development Budget as well as with the Economic Development JED Fund as a backup funding source. And as a pay grade 110 position, this would be under the appointment of the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the acting clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Orderance 159-18 passes 7-0.
Orderance 157-18, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between the City of Medina and the Medina Community Design Committee, CDC, for the use of space in the City of Medina Engine House at 50 Public Square.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This project has been ongoing for numerous years and through the work of Mr. Huber and Attorney Ian Haberman, this lease agreement has been drafted and is before council to create an agreement between the City of Medina and the CDC for an initial time of 10 years for use of the second floor of the, what used to be our fire station on the square. The lower, the lower area is a museum now. So this would be for an office space as well as through my office scheduling a community room that we intentionally kept in the area of the facility where it would overlook the square. And that community room will be available not only to the CDC, the Archive Commission, but scout troops like the ones that are here that can tour the museum downstairs and then actually have their evening meeting upstairs. It will be accessible to the public. And the CDC has worked with the city collaboratively, gaining donations from the public, from foundations, from the CDC themselves and from the City of Medina. And I would respectfully ask council to permit this lease agreement to be signed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the ordinance?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Any abstention?
I'm the executive director of the organization.
That does create a conflict.
That might.
Okay. Any further questions? Will the acting clerk please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance?
Parnell Kavy?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hethinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay. Orderance 160-18 passes 6-1 abstention.
Orderance 161-18, ordinance amending ordinance number 177-17 passed December 11, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.